On this evening, our title for the lesson is "Time is Filled with Transitions." We're gonna go before our heavenly Father with prayer. Dear God, we come before you this evening first thing and thank you, dear God. Thank you for health. Thank you for life and strength, dear God. We thank you for the sound mind that you have given us, dear God. We thank you for this lesson on this evening, dear God. We pray for open hearts and open minds, dear God, so that we may receive from you, dear God, and that we may not only be hearers of the word, but we also be doers. In the mighty name of Jesus, we pray. Amen. Time is filled with transitions. We're gonna go to the background reading, starting with Genesis, chapter forty-six, verse one through seven. "And Israel took his journey with all that he had, and came to Reeshiva, and offered sacrifices unto God of his father, Isaac. And God spake unto Israel in visions of the night, and said, Jacob, Jacob. And he said, Here I am. And he said, I am God, the God of thy Father. Fear not to go down unto Egypt, for I will there make thee, make of thee, a great nation. I will go down with thee unto Egypt, and I will also surely bring thee up again. And Joseph shall perk, put his hand upon thine eyes. And Jacob rose up from Reeshiva, and the sons of Israel carried Jacob, their father, and their little ones, and their wives in the wagons, which Pharaoh had sent to carry him. And they took their cattle and their goods, which they had gotten in the land of Canaan, and came unto Egypt, Jacob, and all his seed with him, and his sons, and his sons' sons with him, his daughters, and his sons' daughters, and all his seed brought he with him into Egypt." Okay, anyone? About what this scripture is talking about? Keeping in mind, we're talking about time is filled with transitions.
This was the time when God had promised Jacob that how he was gonna move him, because he made a covenant with him and he told him of his son. Uh, Joseph was gonna close his eyes. And if you see their trance, if you call it his transition, their trance, um, from, I think they were Canaan and then to Egypt, going to Egypt. So it's, um, the covenant that God has made and the promises made to Jacob, because you know Jacob, this was Jacob who fought with the, with the angels, amazing. This is Jacob with the twelve sons, the tribe. The son, Joseph's father. So it's just a word of God fulfilling. That's where this way it came in transitions.
Um, this, uh, when I was reading that, I, I, I had to do some background on this. And this is when, um, Jacob took his whole family and, uh, moved, um, to Egypt. This is before the famine. So eh, when he had to pick up his whole family and move to a different land, he had to really trust God. And this is Jacob before God changed his name to Israel. So, uh, it's like, uh, whenever we're going through some things, um, I know a lot of us, me especially, I, I used to. God was my second choice. Now, I gotta talk to him first before I make a move, because I found out Betty don't know everything. Okay?
Very true.
So that's why, uh, it's, uh, this is like, we have to, uh, call on the Lord whenever we, we are, uh, uh, when, whenever he calls us to do something, uh, this transition means a change is coming.
And one thing that I got out of it when it was saying, it's where, um, like mother was saying, God kept his promise, his covenant with them. They let him know that even though you may have doubts when he tells you to go somewhere, that I've told, you're gonna, I'm gonna take you there safely and your long-lost son is gonna be the one to close your eyes. Like, you're gonna live like, so it kinda gives you that, that hope and lets you know that it's already done. It's already taken care of. I just need you to go.
And one important thing that he did during this transition was he made time for God on it. He didn't just say, well, you already told me to do it, so I'm done with you until I get done. He has to be there continually. We need to make space for him. Yes, I'm fearful. I don't know what's gonna happen, but I'm not gonna live in that. I still yet gotta consult him every step of the way. So during transitions is, is not always comfortable and it's not always easy. So like Sister Betty said, we gotta make God our number one source, because it's so easy to lose focus, especially when we're in an uncomfortable position.
And that's amazing. Um, so some of these songs, I think they're right, it's God from the Bible, because remember the song? "Time is filled with swift transition. None, none on earth, un, unmoved, can stand. Build your hopes on things eternal, hold the gods unchanging hand." So he had to hold the gods unchanging hand on this.
But he had to know that God's hand was unchanging, even though he was in a changing moment. But God is still the same.
Regardless of what our variables are.
Yeah.
This is why I say, you know, everything that we go through now, he's already overcame. He gives us, step by step, it's, because you know he had to be scared, you know, he had to, you know, you want to take my whole family.
It wasn't just ten people.
At that age.
It said, it could have been like seventy people in total. That, that's a lot of people to travel with.
I mean, you.
Walking. That's a lot of people.
That's a fourth generation, the fourth.
To travel with. You had to trust God to be in a situation like that. We can't even travel with five, ten people.
Two.
Look. I'm tired of seeing you. Tired of dealing with your nagging. Are we there yet?
I have to use the bathroom.
And then go in a place where you don't know about.
Don't know nothing.
Jesus.
What is it gonna be? I don't know. We all gonna find out when we get. Nehemiah six, uh, verses sixteen through eighteen. And it reads, "When all our enemies heard about this, all the surrounding nations were afraid and lost their self-confidence, because they realized that this work had been done with the help of our God. Also in those days, the nobles of Judah were sending many led, letters to Tobias. Replies from Tobias kept coming to them, for many in Judah were under oath to him, since he was son-in-law to Shekinah, son of Ara, and his son Jehonah had married the daughter of Meshalim, son of Barakiah." Anybody know what we're talking about here?
This was the time when Nehemiah went back to Jerusalem to build a wall, and you know, he had a lot of opposition to buy and all of those, and how they said that, um, when he was building the wall, if a fox run up those walls, it would crumble, because they were like Nehemiah's enemy. But Nehemiah was determined, and he wanted to see his hometown, the wall built back up, and you know, he used to walk around in the night when people sleeping to make his plans and how he would go about it, but it was all by the grace of God, because even though he was a cupbearer, serving the king wine, and he didn't have to think about going back home, because eh, all was well with where he was, but his heart was still at home, and that's where we can't forsake where we came. No brain, the bridge had brought us over. So he was, um, you know, compassionate and lo, loving when it comes to his home, and God opened the door and the king, uh, surprisingly, the king noticed him and how his features was changed, and he was an happy and asking, and the king gave him favor. The people who were, he had the pastor to tell him, give them the timber and all that, to build the walls, and so then, but before he did it, he fasted day and night, and he consults God, he trusts God.
The common theme.
Yeah.
I was just wondering, did this story remind anybody of Noah building that ark? You know what I'm saying? It's like the same thing. You got to really trust the Lord.
Yes, because you got to look crazy.
Ah, where they building now? You know, what you doing now? You gotta really trust God, believe in him, and, and do what he says, you, you, you know, you gotta follow his, uh, you gotta be obedient. Humble enough to take all them shots to your pride and, and go on it. Yeah, be submissive and do what God asks you to do.
Because they, I, I have to really practice of, and me get real facts on this, but I understood that, um, some theologian, theologian, theologian said that it, this was the first time it's going to rain. Said, then it used to rain in those states. I don't know if it was, so that's why the people were so amazed and they export them and talk about, and where you gonna find water to float this big boat, this huge boat, but this is it. You got to trust God. Let me tell you something. God rarely just speak to people and tell them to do some. That's why he say, oh, you use the foolish thing to confound the wise. Some things he would say to you, you really would, sometimes you have to say, God, this you, this you say. Hey, you understand? I, I, I'm serious, especially like when I was going through battles with enemies and people who come up against me and like, I, I always say the recite, I still like to say the spirit of the Lord, if I'm not sure, I say, the toward came to me, but people telling me, Madison Stok rebuked me saying, stop saying the toward, that's the spirit of the Lord, you're Christian. So I say, toward came to me that, oh, they, some were having shower, some were going away, some were saying, go do this and do that. And I'm like, what? This people plot against me, you telling me, and then it make you look like, so you the little coward, you know? That's, that's what you feel like when you have to rise above that and show the example. They will be telling you, boy, you're gonna be laughing, and you'll say, so you were wrong all that time, but I'm just, you're the one. But you have to, and trust me, if you really obey the Lord and trust him, and you go, you will see that, uh, man, I tell you, boy, but this flesh, it was, it's our biggest enemy, you know? Pride, Lord, I'm busy.
So a thought for Nehemiah could have been, since I have so many enemies, maybe this is not with God.
Do you understand? I had to go back there.
But it was the complete opposite. It was because of his, him being called, is why he had so many enemies. So the enemy warped our thinking, so we're looking at a fleshly perspective. Why I gotta go through all this if I'm in your will? Like, why? But it's like, why not? If you're in my will, I need you to show. It's because he went through what he went through, that that was the sermon for the people and his enemies. Oh, God is with you. Okay. So after, they were coming up against him, they wanted him to meet with them. Come, come sit and eat with us. We, we know we can beat you, so. Come on. So.
And what we do, and, and as far as what Noah and, and, uh,
Nehemiah.
Nehemiah do, are doing, that you have to look at the situation as God's not gonna do the ordinary.
Right.
You know, he's not, his staying is not, I'm not gonna do it like the world does it. So you have to see God in the unusual. You know, so.
And oftentimes, people think that God makes mistakes when he called them to do certain things. Oh, he didn't mean it for me. Why not? He does not make mistakes. He does not. If you're here, it wasn't by mistake. Your parents may have said oops, but God did not say oops. Hey, that was not it. He, you were formed because he said yes. You would not have been here had he not said yes. So time is filled with transitions and it's not, i- it may look crazy to you and other people, but it's important to have a relationship. We talked about making time for him, and that relationship will let you know, this only could have been God. I know how he speaks to me. A relationship, you, you know, you know that other person and their, their characteristic. This, this is how he comes to me. It couldn't have been nothing else but him. So that's important to remember as well.
And you know, just thinking with Nehemiah and the same thing with Noah, is that people was judging him and laughing at him and making fun of him. But God, why would he deliver you from if he can get the glory, what you going through it? And so that's what, you know, one thing that I've, I'm learning is that a lot of things that he just is gonna be with us to go through, so he can get the glory, to show that, yeah, you're gonna see these people laughing at you, and it does look strange, but he's still gonna get the glory from it. And it's not automatically just to take you out of a situation, but that's like, um, mother and, um, Sister Betty was saying, you know, you, it's that trusting and believing, like you said, that connection of having that connection of knowing that it is of him and that relationship that you do have and that language that you speak.
Definitely. John fourteen, verses one through twenty-one. "Let not your heart be troubled; ye believe in God, but believe also in me. In my Father's house are many mansions. If it were not so, I would have told you. I go to prepare a place for you, and if I go and prepare a place for you, I will come again and receive you unto myself, that where I am, there ye may be also. And whither I go, whither I go, ye know, and may, and the way ye know. Thomas saith unto him, Lord, we know not whither thou goest, and how can we know the way? Jesus saith unto him, I am the way, the truth, and the life. No man cometh unto the Father but by me. If ye had known me, ye should have known my Father also. Ye should have known my Father, and from henceforth ye know him and have seen him. Philip saith unto him, Lord, show us the Father, and it, and it suffieth us. Jesus said unto him, Have I been so long time with you, and yet hast thou not known me? Philip, he hath, he that hath seen me, hath seen the Father, and now how saith thou then, show us the Father? Believest thou not that I am in the Father, and the Father in me? The words I speak unto you, I speak not of myself, but the Father, that dwelleth in me; he doeth the works. Believe me that I am the Father, and the Father in me, or else believe me for the very works sake. Verily, verily, I say unto you, He that believeth on me, the works that I do shall he also do, and greater works that thee shall he do, because I go unto my Father. And whatsoever ye shall ask in thy name, I will do, and the Father may be glorified in the Son. If ye shall ask anything in my name, I will do it. If ye love me, keep my commandments, and I will pray to the Father, and he shall give you another comforter, he may abide with you forever, even the spirit of truth, whom the world cannot receive, because it seeth him not, neither knowth him, but ye know him, for he dwelleth in you, and shall be in you. I will not leave you comfortless. I will come to you, yet a little while, and the word seeth me no more, but ye see me, because I live. Ye shall als, ye shall live also. At that day, ye shall know that I am in my Father, and that, and ye in me, and I in you. He that hath my commandments and keepeth them, he it is that loveth me, and he that loveth me shall be loved by my Father, and I will love him, and he will manifest myself to him." All right, all those scriptures, what do we get from that?
Let's see. This was the time when Jesus was on his way back to his father, because remember in Acts, it was the ascension when he went back. So he was with, with his disciples, and he was preparing them for his leaving, but they didn't even, some didn't even get it. That's why he said, let not your heart be troubled. Believe in God, believe also in me. And he said, in my Father's house are many mansion, and if it wasn't, so I wouldn't have told you, he said, I go, he was going back to repair a place, and he said, if I go, I will come again and receive you unto myself, that where I am, there may be your son. Thomas said unto them, Lord, we know not whither thou goest, and how can we know the way? Jesus said, I am the way. You looking at the way right now, the truth and the life. No man coming unto the Father but by me. So we have to go through Jesus, because remember the Father and the son, the son, so, but by me, so. And Philip, all of them, they're like, and this son, Jesus said, bless those who haven't seen and believe, you're with me all the time. And, and you all don't believe, you all saw all the miracles that I work, uh, but he said, what, those who don't even see me, they only heard of me. So it goes to say, sometimes we could be like that too. We, we, we see the work of God, we, we, we saw God work in way back and brought, brought us from hell and all of that. And then sometimes we get in some situations, it's like, we forget all about that. And, and it's like, sometimes we have to remind us and say, hey, this is me. Lord, I am with you, remember? Always, even unto the end of the earth. He promised never to leave us, never forsake us, but it's, it's just us. You know, I wanna share something, and you know, we pray, I always say to God, Holy Spirit, I said, you the one that bring things in my remembrance, what I study. You the one that I lead, and God, you are my paraclete, you are my helper. You the one that reveal the hidden secret. And he say, Holy Spirit, I need you to show me some things. I, you know, some things you praying about and some things you do not understand. I said, open my eyes, give me spiritual eyes, spiritual ears. So, um, I was telling Sister Betty on the bus, coming back Saturday, like I said, I was praying for Dante, keep, and I swear to pray for him. I went to the, got up to go to bathroom, early Sunday morning for two, three AM, lying down, lying down, and all he impressed on me, pray for Dante, pray for Dante, Dante. And I prayed, and when I look at, I saw him walking the service, I was like, but he was only trying me to say, these are little things. You looking for the big things for me to reveal to you, but I'm trying you with these seven little things. And I was like, oh, oh, we could miss him sometimes, and here it is. I said, God, I thank you. I said, it seems like nothing, but to use plenty, but that's how we can miss God. We praying for things, and God showing us and speaking to us, but because we looking like the prophecy, the gift of prophecy, or revelation, knowledge, word, or, you understand? Word of knowledge, but God comes in some little ways. So we, we just don't miss him during this time of transition.
I don't even know where to start. It's just such a beautiful story. I, I get so happy when I find, I, when I found out, I've been puzzled, but I am the way, the truth, and the life. What does that mean? And then when it, it's called a spiritual understanding. It, it all starts with faith. You got to believe first. And, and faith is the one that holds it all together. You got to believe that when I pray, you know, God will answer me, he will hear me, and I believe that you sent your son to save me. And that, uh, it guys, he, he was telling his disciples that when I go, I'm gonna send the comforter. And so when the comforter did come to me and told me about them cigarettes, I was arguing, I was arguing with him, I, he said, he said, a whore is sin. I was like, me too, Lord. I whore sin too. And then he said, uh, um, he said cigarettes is a sin. I said, now, hold up, now wait a minute now. I, I had an argument. I'm serious. I, I'm not saying it was no, no, you know, I wasn't trying to be, uh, disrespectful or anything.
And he knows, because he knows you.
Yeah, and then, then he, he put a, he put a, he threw the, put the God card on me, he said, uh, if you love me, you'll keep my commandments. I said, oh, he, what? if you love me, you'll keep my commandments. I said, oh, he, what? And then I was sitting there, I was like, oh, what happened if I don't obey you? You know, if I rebel? So and then I had no choice. Either you gonna trust me or you're not. So this is just, so I, I decided to trust him and see what he was gonna do, and he put the nail in the coffin. And, uh, I haven't had no urges to smoke, and I'd be sitting there wondering, what was I doing before? I would smoke a whole pack them long cigarettes. This is so beautiful to me. But he's telling his disciples, you with me every day and you don't see, you, you can't see, I mean, really. A lot of us, we can't see, we can't, it's this close, we can't see it. Yes, but, but once you experience it, there's nothing nobody can say to change your mind or tell you, and then you, you, you know what you know what you know. And so God has revealed himself to you. He manifests himself. And so that's when you can, when you, when you get weak, it's a journey.
It is.
Because you start out with a little bit, and then, and when it get bigger, he shows you more things. And then you get stronger like you lifting weights, and then when some bad come, some big change come in your life, then you can say, well, you know, I'm gonna turn it over to the Lord. He'll work it out.
This is a show that Stefan and I watch called The Chosen, and it watching it with the disciples and how they, they portrayed how they were always confused when Jesus hinted anytime about having to leave. They were and we tend to do that. We make the simple complicated. He said, I'm leaving. What do you mean? What I, what I said? That, that's exactly what I mean. It's because we come with our perspective for saying, this is how it should be. They, their thoughts were, when you come, you're staying, and this is how you're gonna operate, and this is what you're gonna do, and that's completely not what he was going to do. So, it was a struggle. It was a fleshly struggle to him, because you're holding on to your perspective instead of getting a God perspective. And that's where the struggle comes in, and that's where Judas messed up. And the way the show portrayed Judas was, he was trying to shove Jesus into doing this great sign and wonder that he was supposed to come and do. But Judas messed up because he held on to his perspective instead of changing to what Jesus was saying. This is what I've came to do. But it still all worked out for, for Jesus is good. He was, he never said, Judas, you gotta leave me, cause you're not for me. I already know what you came to do. He was like, no, God prepares a table for us in the presence of your enemy. So it's not a time to turn away from him. Turn to him. His time is filled with transitions.
Uh, but also with the disciples, this is something Jesus told them from the beginning.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying? If a person keeps repeating something, you know?
And this is not a person, this is Jesus, the way, the truth, and the life.
And he's telling them, I gotta go away. From the beginning, he's telling them. When he's choosing them, when he's teaching them, he keeps reminding them, I gotta go away. So what is this about this man going away? I mean, why is it leaving your mind?
Cause it's, I thought you were going to do it this way, and I don't wanna see the way you're saying it. I hadn't seen you do all these, I still don't understand why you have to leave. It's that trust in God. If he said it, that's it. It's not, I gotta have an opinion. Nope. Don't even think, don't, don't think. I'm think, no, I haven't thought about, no, don't have a thought. Just do it.
I just wanted to say then, the way, the truth, and the life.
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 Yes.
Better way.
Yeah.
The only way. Abundant life, a blessed life. A, 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 a life that you, you can overcome any obstacle. That's the life. The way. Spirit, God, is, is spirit. We can't see him. Okay? Jesus connects us to. He's connecting us to that life. Jesus is the way. He's the truth. Because, uh, he came here to save us. If you have faith and you believe in that truth, then that's what you're gonna get. You're gonna get all that stuff, the promises that God made about us having a better life. So that's how I got, that those three are all connect. Jesus is the, is the cornerstone that connects the spirit with the body.
You have to go through it.
Is showing us that if we believe what, what this Bible here says, if you believe what God says, if you have faith, then, uh, you can do what he did and do it more abundantly.
Greater.
Yes.
And then anything you ask
Yes.
In his name.
Yes.
So.
We say, in Jesus' name, I pray. It's like, why we have to say, in Jesus' name?
You can't get nowhere.
Yeah, you got to, Jesus' name is a powerful name. So it's saying, I pray in Jesus' name, Jesus Christ's name, amen.
Cause that's your connection. Yeah, that's the stamp. Okay, it's going to happen. Acts twenty-seven, five through twelve.
And when he said, we had sailed over the sea of Sicily and Amphilis, came to Myra, a city of Lyssum. And there, the syndrome found ship of
Acts twenty-seven, five through twelve. Yes, ma'am.
And when we had sailed over the sea of Sicily and Amphilis, we came to Myra, the city of Lyssum, and there the syndrome found a ship. Alexandra sailing into Italy, and he put us therein. And when he, we had sailed slowly many days, the scares were come. Scare will come over against Sennaes, and when not suffering, suffering us, we sailed under Crete over against Salam, Salamone. And hardly passing it, came unto a place which is called the fair Haines, nigh whereunto was a city of Lussem. Now when much when much time was spent, and we, and when sailing was now dangerous, because the fast was now already passed, Paul admonished them and said unto them, sirs, I perceive that this voyage will be with hurt and much damage, not only of laden and ship, but also of our lives. Nevertheless, the syndrome believed the master and the owner of the ship more than those things which were spoken by Paul. And because the haven was not commodious to winter in the more part advised to depart thence also, if by any means that they might attain fitness and there to, to winter, which is an haven of Crete and lies toward southwest and northwest.
Okay, what do we get from these scriptures? It was a sailing adventure that ended disastrously. There was a word from God. And the experts decided they knew better. And it could have been avoided.
But after, um, they prayed, that was when Paul was going on, on the journey. And they were shipwrecked, but then they sought the Lord, because at one point they had to throw all the cargo off the boat. And the angel of the Lord appeared and said, the Lord said that, um, fear not. No lives would be lost. He will lose stuff, he may lose the ship. But no lives would be lost. Now, trust me. The, the storm was, one of those fears, they were called Iraq you them, Iraq you them. And when those winds began to blow and the boat began to toss and like going on the nobody checked for the word of the Lord, cause guess what? That's, we, no lives would be lost, and when you look and see the raging, the waves and all of that, and it's dark and lightning and thunder, man, listen, that, that word of God sent, they was, they against the question that you showed up.
It was a lot of distractions going on, so, and that's what the enemy plans in our lives as well.
But boy, it shows that
Stuff going on.
It shows what he's telling us, in spite of the storms in our lives when we go through, in spite of how it looks, let's trust God. Let, let, let's keep hold on to the promises of the word of God, even though you may not see it. It's like sometime, and even some people, you hang up and they tell you, you gotta be crazy. You looking for, what for this situation? You better try get, do something else, or do not let people, when, once you know God spoke, and you knows him, trust him, hold on to his, his, hold to his promises. Do not be swayed by what you see or what you hear. Know that God, he will bring you through.
Definitely.
Be still and see the salvation of the Lord.
Oh, yes, stand still.
And it, and it's hard to be still or stand still, like when you, like they were at sea.
Yes, Lord.
Nothing to play with, like, when you're feeling like you're gonna lose your life.
You can imagine.
Paul is telling you, hey, let's, let's break bread together. Sir, there's a storm going on. Do you not see the, you wanna eat? You don't see the, you don't feel the wind? He's like, no, let's just stay doing what we're doing. Because it shows faith. And oftentimes, it's easier to come here Sunday when everyone is here. Yes, I love the Lord. But when we're dealing with transitions during the week, it's like, do I really love the Lord? Do I really wanna obey his commands when this stuff is, my life is going crazy right now? Life is lifeing right now. Is that something I wanna do? And Paul was like, stare the course. Your actions have to prove what you sing about. Your actions have to prove what you read about. Like we just said, you have to go through Jesus. You have to, whatever you, you're saying you're believing, it's gonna show when we go through these transitions. So, you could decide to obey his word, or you could decide to not heed the warning. It, it's a choice. He ain't gonna make you do it. He's not going to make you do it.
That's right.
But we see here, it's better to do it. Especially when he gives you a word, especially when he stands as manservant, as a woman servant. Heed the word of God.
Like, how much time had passed? Like, if you would have just listened straight away to where you needed to go. But because of the distractions and leaning into the distraction and losing focus, something that you could have got your blessing in five or ten minutes, now you got five or ten years suffering and going around instead of just staying focused to what he says, and that's a lot of times, I know with me, you get distracted on what's going on.
Yes.
And you have to bring back, like mother says, the Holy Spirit brings back to your remembrance of the little things sometimes. And learning to each day to choose, to look, to find, you know, in this scripture, in this verse, in the sun, you know? What do you, let me know, God, you know, and just searching for them type of things.
My boy.
He seeks will find.
When he speak, I mean, when you look at that, even like when some of the, when you read the story with that, some of the, some of the drawings, you see the, the man on the little piece of board and the raft, come to shore, and it, just like he said, no life would be lost. The boat may, and guess what? They came to shore on those little raft, raft, the broken pieces of the boat.
Surviving on broken pieces.
Jesus, man.
You can't survive. It depends on who you have your faith in. All right, central verse. Behold, I will do a new thing. Now it shall spring forth. Shall ye not know it? I will even make a way in the wilderness and rivers in the desert, Isaiah forty-three nineteen, King James Version. The New Living Translation reads, for I am about to do something new. See, I have already begun. Do you not see it? I will make a pathway through the wilderness. I will create rivers in the wasteland. There's nothing impossible with God. There's nothing. Navigate, to make one's way about, over or through, to operate or control the course of. Append, to set, stand, or rise on end, to affect to the point of being upset or flurried. Introduction. All people go through transitions. Some are good and some are bad. These new seasons of life stretch our faith, move people out of their comfort zones, and create feelings of loss. Transitions can be challenging, but they can also bring new growth. God will help every believer who asks for his help to navigate through every transition in life. Unexpected challenges can append all the wonderful plans that a believer has made for their lives and offers them a challenge to respond in faith. One of the greatest tools that a believer can have and use during times of transition is the power of prayer, as he allows God to be his anchor. To transit means to move people or goods from one place to another. It means bringing about a change. Nehemiah saw a need to change some things in his precious Jerusalem. So with help, he got permission from the king and rallied the people. He rebuilt the temple in fifty-two days. When the people saw what he had done, they knew that God had been at work. Some things cannot nor will they ever change or transition without the people of God, or without the help of God. In the time of famine, the Israelites had to leave their home and go to Egypt to be able to survive. God told them not to be afraid to transition or to make a change. He assured them that he would be with them as they went. What did we get from the introduction? The one sentence that talked about unexpected challenges can cause you to be upset, and all, and shift the wonderful plans that a believer has made for their lives and offers them a challenge to respond in faith. So oftentimes during transitions, it's a challenge to answer back in faith. Do we answer back in faith though, or do we answer back in worry, in doubt? Questions and disbelief?
Or not understanding.
Yeah.
I, I was gonna say, when we're in tran, we're in transition now. We're moving from the physical man to the spiritual man. So you're not gonna stay the same. Okay, there's gonna be all kinds of stuff, a lot of stuff we blame the devil for. It's God working through us so we can grow, so we can change, cause you're not gonna stay in the same position that you was before you started this transformation, because those two just cannot exist at the same time. So, uh, like this power of prayer, I learned that early from my mom. And so, uh, prayer is, is probably the most powerful tool. But i- in order for your prayers to be answered, you gotta have faith. You gotta believe.
And Pastor talked about that on Sunday. If you're gonna worry, don't pray about it. If you're gonna pray about it, don't worry about it. Now, we're human, so we might worry before we pray. But when we pray about it, that worrying should cease, because if I truly believe that he's going to work it out, why am I worrying? So you, you, you don't believe it then. If you're, you're continuing to, you can start off there. We're human, we can start there. But there should be a transition when I pray. It should not be the same. There should be a change.
And then it's like lifting weights. Once you see God work did this, then the next time some trouble come, you'll say, well, I seen him do this, I know he can do that, and it's like you get stronger in your faith as you move along this journey.
Yeah, usually when you lifting weights, you don't keep the same weights that you're lifting. You're changing and you, cause your muscles are growing and getting stronger, so it's like, okay, this ain't doing nothing for me. So, and that's how it is with, with our walk of Christ. Um, the transitions, they become different. They feel different as we grow in him, and as it should, cause the enemy should not be able to come back to me with the same thing he start. Some, something's up. If he getting me the same way when I first gave my life to Christ, something is, I need to go back to the drawing board. Start back at Genesis. Let's, let's go back to Adam and Eve. Discussion. Jesus understood how hurtful transitions could be, oh Lord. So he took the time, the night before his death, to lead his disciples through the difficult transition of him no longer being with them physically. He employed empathy, vision, and assurance to strengthen their faith. Believers must seek God's guidance as they seek to care for their friends and others in times of uncertainty and or difficulty or during the many transitions in their circles. The believer must know that when he goes through painful transitions in life, God is constant and he will never change. Every believer needs to know that he has someone who is unchanging when he faces stress, fears, and concerns that arise when changes happen in his life. This is especially true in the uncertain times that we are living in. Transitions are not easy and they may cause a person to want to throw up their hands and run and hide rather than face them. The believers needs to learn to rely on God's love and wisdom and allow him to turn them into blessings in their lives. All believers go through transitions in life. Sometimes it is a loss of a job, a friendship, or an unexpected detour in their lives. Transitions are unavoidable. Jesus had walked, talked, and slept in the same places with his disciples for three and a half years. He knew that hi- his leaving would bring drastic changes in their daily lives. So he took the time to talk about it because he wanted them to stand strong in hope and carry on the mandate he had given them. He told them that in this world, they would have troubles, but the things would be all right because he had prayed for them. In the midst of transitions that will occur, the believer must remain steadfast in his faith and his hope in Jesus Christ. The time will come when all that he will have is faith in in Jesus Christ. For the word of the Lord, let's the believer know that the just shall live by faith. Habakkuk two and four. And also that without faith, it's impossible to please God. Hebrews eleven and six. Jesus taught the disciples to navigate change, build resilience, and foster unity guided by the godly principles that he had taught them. He taught them to trust in his works and his faith, which was an example to them. He allowed them to see the human part of himself, yet he exposed them to the God inside of himself. Just as the disciples became equipped with the ability to navigate through many trials and tribulations that he shared with them, every believer must learn to operate in that same faith. Jesus told believers that if they wanted to become his disciples, they too must take up their cross and follow him. By following Jesus, the disciples were able to learn how to reduce the stress of transition by adapting to the changes or resisting the changes. Whatever following Jesus may entail for the believer, its process and purpose are critical to his success as a servant leader. If he can't follow Jesus and be successful, then he will never be able to lead and represent the kingdom successfully. Biblical wisdom can help the believer cope with any situation in his life. Many new variables and changes arise during transitions that may seem overwhelming. But the believer must realize the magnitude of God's power and love, which can improve the believer's attitude and his perspective drastically. This can help the believer approach his life with confidence and an overflowing of love and well-being for God's presence. Any thoughts? Any takeaways?
Transitions in our life are are very necessary.
Unavoidable.
Yeah, but there are, I mean, I'm saying that because oftentimes we go through things and we don't overcome them.
But he told us we're more than overcomers.
Yeah, but we don't in the physical because we're relying on ourselves. And so when we don't go overcome that transition, God's gonna take us through another. So we're, you know.
I mean, it's life, so it's going to keep happening.
But yeah.
But navigating, we gotta remember, we gotta figure out that navigation by using the word of God.
My strength is made perfect in. Weakness, is that that scripture?
His strength.
His strength is made perfect in my weakness.
In my weakness.
So when I'm weak.
And when I feel overwhelmed.
And I feel overwhelmed.
You may not be overwhelmed, but the feeling will be there.
Yeah, because.
You are in fact more than a conqueror, but that feeling, we stop when we feel certain things.
Yes.
We stop because we think the feeling is greater than he that is in us. No, it's not, you're oh, you have authority over your feeling.
Yes, but but see, my people die from lack of knowledge. If you don't know how strong and powerful and wonderfully made you are, how are you gonna?
Know that to say, I'm more than an overcomer. I may feel like this now, but I speak against this feeling in the name of Jesus.
Yes, you don't, I I I know that one. Yes, because uh, we just don't know. You know, if you don't know that you're a conqueror, you don't know, because I thought that I I look big and I say, well, people treat me like that, you know, like I'm, I'd be over here crying in the corner. I mean, my looks defy who I am on the inside. So I'm always defending that Betty that you perceive me to be, but.
Not your faith.
Yeah, it ain't my, it ain't mine, because this body is not mine, it's the Lord's. So when I, when I believe what he say and I stay in alignment with him, then I can go out here and be all those things that you just said. But if I don't know that, then I can't be those things.
And if I don't read his word and I read where he parted a whole sea.
Yes.
For his children to walk through and then close it back when their enemies came. If I don't read in his word where the he, the enemy threw the believers into a lion den with hungry lions and they came back out without a scar.
And what about the mustard seed?
Believers were thrown into a fiery furnace.
Yes.
Scorching that it was so hot that the people that threw them in, they died.
Yeah.
It don't make sense.
Yes.
So when I don't know how I'm gonna make it out, my God does not make sense, he makes faith. So you trying to look for sense, no, look for faith. I have to believe he's done those things and he's not a respectful person, so if he did it for them, he's gonna turn around and do it for me. If I'm walking according to what he's called me to walk, he didn't ask me to be perfect.
Yes.
He just said, to love me, obey my commandments. If you fall short, repent and come back, don't walk away from me, stay with me. And if I'm doing that, he's obligated, that's his word, he's going to care for me. There's, I think there's a mic over there too. Okay. She's preparing. It's a transition. Let's work through it, let's navigate through it.
Um, like blinking off and on, I don't know. Um, no. Um, whenever like I got sober, I realized that, see now y'all made me all laughing. No, like, I look back now for all the years that I struggled with like addiction and so, and I mean, I'm always gonna be an addict, but now that I'm a clean addict. Um, I realized that God was with me so many times and I didn't even realize it. And you know, like to have somebody love you that much that protected me this whole time. I mean, because I see people that I hung out with, you know, they got in trouble or they passed or they can't kick it, you know, and it's like, God love, I've realized that, you know, and I didn't see it then, you know, I get mad and I put on, and I was talking the other day about, like I used to shoot up and I could, not a very good shooter upper. Um, and everybody else would always be like, oh, your veins are horrible or oh, yeah, blah, blah, blah. But it wasn't that, it was God, God didn't want me to do it. So God protected me from being able to do it. And at the times, you know, I'd be mad like.
Nothing could go right for me, like.
I can't even do this right. But now, you know, that I look back and like, I just thank him so much and I pray because I know that it was him now.
He was there all the time, waiting patiently, yes. Thank you, God, yes. In the lives of believers, nothing just happens. Wow. The outcomes they experience are predicted on actions or inactions, either by themselves or something else. Their outcomes are also driven by several factors, including spiritual principles, personal choices, or their mindset. The believers need the right mindset and appropriate actions to finish strong and stay empowered for whatever transitions come in their lives. Sometimes he has to come to a nevertheless moment to be able to move forward in victory and triumph. But know that if he applies all that Jesus and his word has imparted into him, he will be a winner every time. Apply the word. Apply the word. And um, in the discussion it did talk about sometimes we need to adapt to the change or resist the change. And that got me to thinking when they build the Tower of Babel. Cause not all change is good, sometimes we change outside of the will of God. And they decided I needed to reach heaven, so we gonna, we gonna work this out. No one consulted God. I just need to do this. And that was a moment to resist the change. If if it's not in the will of God, it's a resist the change. And what that is, is seeking God, you, because we we said have that relationship. Is it not, uh, oh, I I'm I'm hitting everybody's ladder down, that's not, no. You resist the change and let God handle the rest of it. Cause it's a really, everything is a one-on-one, everything is a one-on-one. So, because you didn't get your way when you wanted to get your way, nobody is, no, that's not what it is. But and then when we have to adapt, is God, wha- what what are you doing in this moment? It should always be a conversation with him, all constant conversation. Because he, what he's asking you to do, and in the conclusion it says, the experiences are predicated on actions or inactions, either by themselves or someone else. Your actions matter and your actions should always line up with with God. I- if it's not in love, it's not God. He he is love. At the end of the day, if you don't know nothing and nothing about God, he is love. And if it doesn't line up with love, it's not God, so that's one way to tell if I'm in the will of God. Am I showing myself love? Am I showing others love? So I might, my my thoughts showing love, because sometimes it starts with a thought. We have to get the small foxes. It starts with a mindset, it mentioned that the mindset behind it. So when I catch myself speaking negative words, no matter what it may be about, oh, oh, there's a storm coming, oh, we need to get off the road before we we drive off the. What do you believe? Thank you, God, for keeping us that we making it safely to our destiny, because I believe you're able to keep me no matter where I am. Even if I make a wrong turn, I believe you are able to navigate me through, no matter what type of waters it is I'm in. It's your belief.
I believe it, but.
You know, but.
Well, you didn't catch it.
There's no but, when it comes to God, there is not a but.
No, I, you didn't catch it, isn't it?
Yeah. That's what I'm saying, and now my response is when it comes to God, there is no but, don't think about it.
What I was trying to say, I was starting referring to myself.
That's whoever it is.
I believe it, but fear makes me scream and say.
So in that, in that moment, who, who, in that moment, in that moment, is i- is is God in charge or is the fear in charge?
No, I understand, you know, but I'm only saying the human part of me.
Yeah. That's why I say there should be no but.
I do when I act like that, sometimes I look by and say, Jesus, somebody see on me, forgive me. Yeah.
That's all it is, coming back to him. Come, come, come back to him.
But let me tell you.
But that's what we do, that's why I said, that's why I respond, there should not be a but. There's no excuse for a but. If I read about this word and what he can do, it says, but the believer must realize the magnitude of God's power and love, which can improve his believe, the believer's attitude and perspective drastically.
And see, most of the times when we we get this bottle, we get fears, we looking at directly at the situation.
The storm, we look at, just like we talked about, we're looking at the storm and what is happening to the boat and what? That's distractions, stay focused.
All come to your mind is, what was gonna happen?
The worst that can happen, yeah. What are some of the changes the believers must face? What's, what are some of the changes we go through as believers or Jesus, anyone, period? Yeah.
Divorce, job loss, financial difficulty, death, birth, suicide, depression.
So how can we make these transitions better? All those transitions she just mentioned, how do you make going through a divorce, a loss of a job, go into God, first person to go to? Don't go to the bad habit.
Don't go to your friend.
Don't go, I don't, no. Don't go to they. Go directly to God and seek his guidance. Don't let it put put you off a kilter, stay on track.
And I believe that sometimes, like um, mother was talking about, that's the flesh part of us, and when we do go through that challenge, first and we need to call sister so-and-so or my neighbor this and that, and then, okay, I didn't have the right answer that I want, then we're like, then we're gonna go to God.
It it's the habit we develop, it's the small things, that's what we talked about, it's the small things.
Dix a friend.
Right, you don't get all the opinions first.
Yeah.
And then you can have, and but that's even the good, even if you have the friends that would tell you to go to God, but you still gotta get that friend's opinion to say, go to God, when.
You should have been God first, yeah. Cause people are fickle, that's one thing we have to learn. Even with our best intentions, we still mess up. So there's gonna come a transition, if you think, oh, this person is it and I don't need to go to God, there may come a transition where that person gotta be moved to the side. So. How, or why did God allow Israel to make a transition? Well, there was a famine coming, so it was, it was needed. They may not have realized it at the time, but if if he allows something to happen and has a purpose, as difficult as it is, if he allowed it, it still has a purpose. How can God help you with transitions in your life? Personal, we shouldn't need to look at the book for this now. How can God help you with transitions in your life? Thinking about this lesson and what we all talk about, how can I go to God and he can help me with what I'm personally going through right now?
Cause he gives you peace. Gives you strength.
When you pray to him, what's gonna happen?
Get hope.
Faith increase. How can he help, how can he help everyone else?
First you have to trust him, but he can deliver you, he will deliver you.
He can deliver you, depending on what the situation is, yes.
And that's why this is, this is one of the scriptures we gotta hold on to, even though we don't understand it. When we see by the scripture say, all things work together for good.
For them that. And our call, we gotta finish the whole one. So I, if I love him, I must be obeying his commands. If I'm obeying his commands, it has to work out for my good. It's not just all the situations gonna work out, you got to love him. And if you love him, you're obeying his commands.
By his call and his purposes, so.
Gotta be in his will.
And you know, that's true, you know, the natural, not gonna understand that, the natural man is not gonna understand that, but it is, you man, you going through it, I mean, I mean, the voice of the voice and you saying, all things can work together for good that those who love the Lord.
Yeah, the flash is gonna say, how is it, how is this working out for me?
What kind of senses make?
Well, Jesus died on the cross and they didn't figure it out until after he died, so it's not going to make sense.
You go to somebody who, this is why sometimes you go to, people you better know what you're saying to them, because day and morning, they have a serious tragedy, two families, three family members died and you say, come, my sister, all things. What? I don't understand, what you talking about? All things, my family in the mug, all things work together for good. Sometimes we still have to know what to say to people, you know?
Yeah.
Because that's what Paul talks about with the bread and the meat and the milk. They can't accept that, can't accept that, Lord Jesus, that's, oh, God.
Yeah. Essential thought, sometimes changes are needed to get the results that aren't needed. And when we go through life, remember time is filled with transitions, but it's important that we lean on God. Don't walk away from him, don't run away from him. Adam and Eve show us that's not the way. We cannot hide from him. He is always with us, even though we may not realize it at the time. He never ever leaves us nor forsakes us, so hold on to that. Dear God, we thank you for this lesson on this evening, God, we thank you there, God, that we don't have to go through transitions without you, God, help us to lean and depend on you through these transitions, God. Help, help us to rely on the Holy Spirit to help us to navigate these transitions, God. And realize that anything that we go through, you can get the glory out of God. Any test that we go through, God, the testimony can draw others to you there, God. Realizing that, just like Jesus, the transition he went through not only blessed him. Realizing that, just like Jesus, the transition he went through not only blessed him, but it blessed generations to come, there God. We thank you there, God, for using us to bless generations to come in our families and in our communities, God. Because we do not and will not stray away from you, there God. We bind the enemy on every end, there God, we thank you there, God, that as we leave this place, we never leave your presence, God. We thank you for strength, we thank you for hope, God, we thank you for faith increase. Right now, God, we plead the blood of Jesus over every individual present, every individual on the live stream. And there God, every family member represented, we got, we believe you, we believe in your word, there God. That it's going to work out for our good, because we love you and we are called by you. These things we ask, in the mighty name of Jesus, we pray, and we say, amen.